And we will follow that with the Pledge of Allegiance.
Let us pray. I, David Foulton, Lord, we thank you for all the many blessings you've given this city and these people, Lord. We thank you for all that you've done. Be with us, Lord, as we go through the decision-making and make sure all the decisions are based on your will. Lead, guide, direct us, Lord, in all that we do, in your heavenly name we pray. Amen.
Amen. Pledge allegiance through the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We only have one item on tonight's agenda, and we're going to open the floor to public participation in just a couple of minutes, but before we do that, we're going to have council comments, and I'm going to start off with Councilman Jay Robinson. And Jay, with you, please share your comments.
Sure. Um, I want to start out by kind of going through a little bit of the history here because I think that's important to...I think that's important in understanding where we are today. If you go back several months, back in June, we had two petitions that were being circulated throughout the city. One requesting a change in the form of government to council manager and requesting that there be districts. And you had a second that was requesting a change in the form of government but was...did not specify districts but was being pitched as at-large. And that one is the one that had the most amount of...or the correct amount of signatures and was what was ultimately certified, which created the issue that we're here today to talk about. All right? So you've got two petitions, one for districts, one for at-large. The one for districts did not succeed in getting the appropriate amount of signatures. Okay? Mr. Ben, you're shaking your head. Am I wrong in that, or is that...
Your numbers are right.
Okay.
Most of the people on this side voted for that side.
Right. But my numbers are correct.
Your numbers are correct.
Okay. All right. And so we proceed into July where the petition is certified and it's going to be put on the ballot in 90 days. And so there's been some, you know, the thing that concerns me the most about doing what we do is I continue to feel like there's bad information. And it's not always intentional. Sometimes people are just wrong and they don't know it. But it's concerning when bad information gets out, and it's disappointing when it's...when the information is personal in nature and makes it a personal issue as opposed to just a disagreement on whatever the idea may be. And so some of the information is that the council sat on this information and did nothing to check whether it was right or wrong or how to move forward. And that's simply not true. You know, back in July, once this issue came up, we started contacting our lawmakers, the people who created this bill. We have conversations with our probate judge and on how to move forward to make sure that we're doing it in the right way. And what we found out is there's a lot of uncertainty because this is brand-new. This is a new bill that nobody has ever tested or moved forward with. And so we received answers of a lot of uncertainty. We get a feedback from the probate judge that says, "The question that was posed by the Fresh Start Fair Hope group is a legitimate question that can be put on the ballot." So there's no question about that. The question that's posed is, "Do you want a change in government to council manager form that's legitimate?" The issue is, "What does that mean?" And there is so much confusion on that. Going back and looking at the Fresh Start Fair Hope page today to make sure that I didn't say anything incorrectly, that page says, in response to the two different positions, "The substantive difference between us and the other petition is that our petition is for at-large." And so a large majority of the people that are moving forward with this think that what they would vote on October 2nd would be an election to change for council manager with at-large council members, or that it could be decided by council at a later time to decide whether it's council or districts. That's wrong. We got a legal opinion yesterday, okay, that we asked four months ago. And the preliminary legal opinion is that if this passes, it has to be districts. There's no choice about it. And so in the last several weeks, we have been getting in absentee ballots already for this October election when those people think they are voting for something that is at-large. And I think for, you know, I have been very careful in doing what I do up here, even chastising the mayor and the other council members not to take a side from this pulpit, and I have not done that. And I'm not doing that today either. What my job here is to make sure that any election we have in Fair Hope is fair, objective, and easily understood by those that are voting in it. And I think at this point in time, it is completely uncertain as to what we're voting on, what the votes that have already been cast were based on, because up until yesterday, I was under the assumption, like every one of you probably were, that the vote on October 2nd would be just the change in government, and it would be decided later on whether it was council or at-large or at districts. We were all wrong. And it wasn't intentional. There was no, you know, intent otherwise. It was just, it's new. It's a new law. Nobody quite understands exactly how to move forward with it because it's never been done before. And so what we would ask, and I think what this does, is we are asking the court to, number one, make sure that the petition as written can move forward because of this...the ruling that we now believe is correct, that it has to be districts, because that's not what was proposed in the petition. But number two, to make sure that there is time, because now we've gotten absentee ballots that might be based on an election that isn't actually occurring. And so we need to make sure, because in my opinion, if one ballot is cast based on that wrong information, that's unfair. It's unfair to the city, and it's unfair to the people that their votes are being lost because we didn't know what was going on, because the law is unclear and there's some uncertainty in the election process. And so, you know, any idea that any decision that is made is designed to upset, delay, or kill any side of this, I think is misguided because we don't have that authority. We can't kill it. We can't delay it. All we can ask the court to do is present them the facts. This is what's gone on to this point in time. We're not sure what to do, because we...all we want to do is make sure that it's done correctly and fairly. And so once...we might propose this to the court, and it'll be done in sort of an injunction style because it's got to be done correctly because the vote's in nearly two weeks. And they might say, "Tough. Petition's good. Move forward. The vote's on October 2nd. Results will be what they will be." And if that's the case, then that's what it is. But we need to make sure that we're doing what we can to make sure it's done correctly and fairly. And that's all this is about. It's that simple. And so that's all I've got. I'll be happy to answer any questions for anybody that...you know, I got a lot of emails today. I tried to call everybody back. If you sent me an email, I hope that I got to you. And everybody seemed to understand, once we started talking about it, that there's really so much uncertainty, and it's really not fair to do it in the way that it's been done. And again, that's nobody's fault, but it's just...it's kind of a bizarre situation that we're all kind of getting our arms around and trying to do it the right way. But with that said, I'll end my comments. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Robinson. Councilman Brown?
Thank you. I'm not going to be as long-winded as Jay was on this topic, but I did speak with a representative today from Fresh Start Fair Hope, and his point was, "It doesn't matter what, whether it's at-large or district, we just need to change the form of government." So I'm going to digress a little bit and touch on what Jay mentioned. I went to the Fresh Start Fair Hope Facebook page and pulled this from their post several weeks ago. "Thank you for your questions and comments regarding the Fresh Start Fair Hope petition form and its difference from the one being circulated by the mayor." Whether it was or not, it's not relevant. "As we discussed in our meeting last Thursday night, and which was confirmed at the council meeting Monday night, both petitions are approved. The Fresh Start Fair Hope volunteers and supporters voted to seek at-large council representation under the council city manager system, whereas the mayor's petition specifies the so-called 'districting plan.' That is the substantive difference between the two. As for specific wording used on the Fresh Start Fair Hope petition, we have conformed to legal requirements. Thank you for continuing participation in this grassroots voter process. To maintain the grassroots, none of this takes place until the 2020 election." So if anybody is trying to ramrod anything through to happen here in a few weeks, when somebody calls me and says, "What are we voting on?", and I can't give them a clear answer, I'm not in favor of pushing it through. That's all I have.
Thank you, Councilman Brown. Councilman Boone?
Well, I guess I'd go and say the same thing they said, but basically I agree with everything they said, therefore I have no comment.
Yeah. I appreciate Jay's explanation to everybody, and I've had a lot of people on...there's basically three ways you could think about this. Either you don't want to change, either you do want to change with districts...I guess there's four ways. Or you do want to change at-large, or you want to change and you really don't care which way it goes, at-large or districts. There's really four ways you could go. But at this point in time, I see...we sought an opinion from the Attorney General to give us clarity on what people are voting on. I have not seen that clarity, and that's the reason that I would support this action. There's not been any backdoor deals done. We're not trying to stop an election. We're not trying to put an end to it. We're simply trying to...and I think we're being as completely transparent as we can be. If you go back to...I did a quick search of emails today. I found an email from July the 25th in which we were talking about the language that would be sent to the Attorney General. So I know we at least started the conversation of trying to get an opinion earlier than July the 25th. I think the petition was validated sometime late June, if I'm not mistaken. So there wasn't a lot of time, two, three weeks maximum, that transpired before these questions started arising. So that wasn't...there was nothing sinister about that. As soon as we started receiving questions, "Well, what is it going to mean?", we started asking questions, and government takes a little time. We sent the letter to the Attorney General asking for clarity, because I still do not know. If you go and vote for it, I do not know if it's going to be at-large. I do not know if it's going to be district. And I even stated in the meeting when we voted on it, it was my understanding that you just pass it or you don't pass, and if it passes, the council gets to choose. Well, we received an unofficial, non-binding legal opinion from a pretty high entity that stated, "If it passes, it will be districts." That's what we received. And that doesn't even jive with what I told the people. I told the people that I thought it was the council decides if it passes. So anyway, that's where we're at. I will close council comments.
I got one more thing to add.
Yes, sir.
Yeah, so you have the two petitions. One of them got 800 that was sold as at-large, and I don't...whether it's at-large or district, I'm not going to discuss that. But the petition that got enough votes was sold at-large. The petition that did not get enough votes was district. So the opinion that we've gotten is saying it's going to be district, then that petition did not receive enough votes to be valid. That's it.
Okay. I'll close council comments, and we'll open it up to public participation. You can come up to the podium and state your name and address. Bob?
Do we have a question? And I would like to ask a question. Don't move until we get there. The question I may ask, and I may walk for a minute, is, "Who is your point of source for the opinions that you mentioned?" Did you got an opinion? Attorney General?
Attorney General.
No? Who? I'm asking...
Mr. General, we don't have anything official yet.
Well, he just said he had an opinion. Yesterday, he just burst things out of his mouth, and I'm asking, "Whose opinion does he have?" Who is...
Preliminary.
Who?
Preliminary from the Attorney General, and we've had it from other attorneys as well.
Who?
Well...
Can we see it?
I've looked at...no, you can't. No, sir. It's not official.
It's not?
He just stated unofficial from the Attorney General.
Can we see it, though?
No, sir. It's not an official opinion. It is not for dissemination.
Why not?
Well, the Attorney General said it's not for dissemination, so we can't release it.
Excuse me. My oxygen is out. It's hot and dangerous out there. I'm Bob General. 156 Orange. I speak to you as a citizen. I speak to you as a member of this council for eight years. I speak to you as former and first president of the city council. Did any one of you come to any of the meetings that Fresh Start had?
I can tell you, I did not, Bob. And I tried to stay apolitical in it.
Did any of you know that Sam Gaston, who co-authored the bill, came here and gave a PowerPoint presentation? He co-authored the bill. Has anyone contacted him?
Yes, sir.
And he said?
He said it screwed up, and they're going to try to amend it next session.
First I've heard.
Now, that's coming from another attorney.
That's what he said, or he wrote a letter?
That's coming from another attorney. And that may have been another one, Mr. General.
I'm not going to debate and be argumentative, but I want us to be open. We talked about transparency. You need to be transparent, too.
Yes, sir. Mr. General, that's why one of the things I said is, "We contacted the lawmakers," and what we were told was that they didn't anticipate this, is that there is uncertainty on how to move forward on some of this, that they didn't contemplate when they drafted the bill, which is why one of the things Mr. McDowell said is, "They're going to try to fix that when they go back into session." But we're operating under the uncertainty because it's not fixed. And so that's why we're in the predicament we're in now.
Do we know what the other cities are doing? There are 16 other cities doing this.
16 other cities that have moved forward under this bill?
The old bill and the new.
I don't know of anybody else that's moving...currently moving under the same bill.
We need to get our facts. And I'm not being debatable.
Sure.
But we're a little late in the game to be asking the questions. It's bothersome to me. And these folks, 800-plus people, want to know. And I think that you owe that, because we don't like it, or we don't understand it, or it's got bugs in it. What are you going to do if we get a restraining order and we miss the deadline that's in the law? You're responsible. The deadline was like, what...how many days was it?
It's got to be 90 days.
90 days.
Well, that would...
For a judge of probate, now, you're forgetting him, too, because he researched this, and he hadn't said a word about it.
That's right. He researched whether the question was legitimate.
It's the law. That's correct.
And there's no doubt that the question is legitimate, but what we've been researching, and again, this is not something that was asked yesterday. This is something that we started asking back in July when this first...when it was first certified. And it's...because of the uncertainty, I mean, the answers we've gotten were, "We don't know. We don't know. We don't know." And we have continued to push until we finally got it.
Did you contact Fresh Start and say, "Hey, how about let's join in hands here and do something?"
I'm sorry?
Did you contact Fresh Start and say, "Can we help one another like other cities may do?"
Well, as much as I respect the people that are part of Fresh Start, they can't give us a legal opinion.
Well, they can work with you to get it, you know? I just...I'm a little bothered here that we're playing "gotcha" politics at the very...two weeks out, and we've been here for three months. You know that. You've mentioned it.
Sure. Yes, sir. And again, and I don't mean to be repetitive, but the question was asked several months ago, and the preliminary answer didn't come in until yesterday. And how...
And it came in from whom?
It was a preliminary opinion from the Attorney General's office. It has not been signed by the Attorney General, and it is not a binding opinion at this point.
It's from the Attorney General's office.
Yes, sir.
Have you shared it with anyone, just yesterday?
Have I shared what with anybody?
Is this the first time we've heard of it?
Well, this is the first meeting we've had just about...
Preliminary hearing.
Sure.
Everybody's talking about emails here. Now we've gone deaf and dumb. What's going on? I'm a little irritated, as you can tell.
Sure.
I've been in your seat, guys.
Yeah, and I don't mean to be combative. I just...I want to make sure I'm understanding it. We were given an email, and when you asked who it came from, the reason I looked at Mr. McDowell is because I was told that the opinion cannot be shared. And I think I was...
What would it be?
I think I was told that that came directly from the Attorney General, and I am not going to be the one that goes against what the Attorney General tells us to do. As soon as it becomes public, it will be public, and anybody can look at it. But the gist of it, and the only thing that matters for the purposes of this hearing, is that it says that whatever the vote is, when the change, at-large is not an option. It's districts, or it's the way it is today. And those are the only two ways to do it.
At-large or at our district, or none?
No, 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 no.
Strictly districts.
It's the current system of government, the council, the strong council, weak mayor system we have today, or it's the council manager form with single-member districts. Those are the only two options.
According to the unofficial, non-binding AEG...
I would suggest that you share that information with Fresh Start and the voters, all 800 of them, as to what it is.
As soon as the Attorney...
And clear it up.
Yeah, as soon as the Attorney General gives us the authority to do that, I will be glad to.
Now, we're going to have a restraining order?
Would you say...
Are we going to have a temporary restraining order?
We're going to vote on that tonight.
So we're going to go over to the courthouse and figure it out?
Yeah, yeah. Well, I mean, the only way to make sure we're doing it right is to see if we can not stop the election, but delay it until the information is accurate.
Well, don't you think Fresh Start would like to be a part of that? And do that, too? That's certainly...
Well, of course. And I don't think there's anybody saying they can't be a part of it. This is, again, this is something that's come up. I mean, we asked for the opinion a month ago, and I know Mr. Zunk came to the meeting and discussed it at the time, and so it's not been secret.
You know, Fresh Start asked for an opinion, too.
Have they been...have you guys been given one yet? Okay.
Nope.
Well, I hope when you get it, you'll share it with us, too.
We'll do that. I'm sure they will. I find it interesting that the council's been silent checking out legal opinions, but has not questioned me, anyone else. You guys have been copied on everything Fresh Start's done.
Yeah. Mr. General, I think that...well, we weren't completely silent because we passed the resolution to ask for the AEG opinion in an open meeting. It was done in the open. I think the reason the council's been silent is because they haven't tried to sway it in any way. Because if we had, then you might complain about that. I mean, we tried to stay completely out of process and let the citizens group do what they...
I'm not going to complain about that. The law's the one that complains about that.
Do what they were doing, and we'll stay out of their way.
Okay.
That was, I believe, that was my intent. I tried to stay out of everybody's way and not push it one way or the other.
Well, I appreciate your time. I appreciate your time. I ask for your cooperation all around. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I believe the lady was standing. Yeah. Mr. Zunk, I'm sorry.
Why, you make me feel short. Yeah, hi. My name is Wendy Foose. I live at 293 Chet Avenue. I happen to have a master's in public administration, and I will tell you flat-out that I believe in a city manager form of government. I have read that bill, and I guess my dilemma is, if we are the first one enacting it under this bill, and the bill is absolutely silent on the mandatoriness of, if you will, I'm trying to come up with the right expression, of a district, which was not what this is primarily about. It's about, are we a big enough city now to have a professional manager that would allow you all to concentrate on long-term planning and in terms of strategic thinking so we can move on with the things we know we need to do? Can you at least even tell us how the Attorney General can cite an absolute like that when I spent all last night reading that bill again, and it's absolutely silent? Can you at least even tell us how the Attorney General gets from A to B? Anything?
So you're basically stating that it is a dilemma. I mean, it's...
Well, it's...I don't think it's absolutely silent. How does someone say it's...if you want to change the form of government to have a...to employ a professional city manager, that in a bill that is absolutely silent on how then you run the council, how the Attorney General comes up with even a preliminary statement that says, "If you want a city manager, you have to have districts." Those things are not in any way, shape, or form related.
So for the people that want to know what that means, don't have that answer, and that's what we're seeking.
But the proposal on the table is simply, in its essence, to say, "Duh. Do the citizens of Fair Hope want to see us have a professional city manager?" I don't think that...I know there was another petition, but I didn't think that I was saying it was at-large versus district. I was thinking, "You all have that prerogative, because there's nothing in the bill that takes that prerogative away from you."
I thought the same thing, ma'am. I thought the same thing, but this preliminary opinion states something different. So we're just saying...
Can you even cite what they're...
We're simply saying we want to stay the election.
Can you even cite the rationale for something?
We're simply stating that we want people to know, when they go to the polls and vote, exactly what they're voting on. And maybe that they're just fine with it, whether...as long as it changes, districts or at-large, they don't care. But at least they go into it knowing that it might be one or the other.
Can we respectfully ask the Attorney General, and when he gives a final, to say how he gets from A to B when there's nothing in the bill that says, "If you would like to change your form of government to have a city manager, then you must go to districts"? Because I don't think that's what other towns that did this before the bill have done. It's not...and I'm no expert in Alabama law. I've lived in that kind of environment in three different states, and I'm here to tell you, I think you'd love it, but that's beside the point. But in none of those did someone come and say, "The minute you want to hire a city manager, you all have to go to districts." That just seems to be an enormous leap, so I would respectfully ask that we ask specifically why the Attorney General thinks that simply asking if you would like to have a city manager and go to that form suddenly makes you have to go to districts.
That's a great question.
And I'm sorry, what was your name again?
My name is Wendy Foose. I live at 293 Chet Avenue, and I happen to be...happen to have a master's in public administration, and I happen to know my stuff.
Sure.
I just don't know Alabama law very well.
And you know it probably a lot better than a lot of the people sitting up here, and so we appreciate your opinion. I absolutely expect there to be an explanation as to how this determination was made. But I think part of the problem is, the bill is silent, but there are some other conflicting code sections in Alabama law that kick in once the change is made. And I know that there are some instances where if you are already in single-member districts, you cannot vote to come out of that. But if you are at-large, then it transitions you into districts. And so I'm not...I don't pretend to agree with it or understand it all, but that is my understanding as to what part of the conflict is, is that you have overlapping sections of code under Alabama law, and you've got so many things that are silent on what that transition is, because again, it's never been pursued. And so everybody's kind of looking at the other guy saying, "What do we do here? This is new to us." And that's kind of where we are. But I absolutely expect there to be an explanation as to how you get from A to B when this opinion becomes final.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, thank you, please.
Okay.
My name is John Manellis. I live at 104 Wyatt Avenue. Thank you, Mr. Robinson. I appreciate your comments. I think it is unfortunate that a lot of this was personalized, and I was surprised to see that. And I'm sorry for that, because I know that I think that each one of you are trying to do what's best in your position and what's best for the citizens of Fair Hope. I truly believe that. I'm not the lawyer. You are, Mr. Robinson, but I've, like this lady, I have studied this for weeks, every single word, back and forth. The confusion is this: The old law states that if you're going to change to a city manager manager form of government, you have an option to do it by petitioning 10% of the voters of that jurisdiction. It does not, under the old law, allow the city council by their own resolution to do that. So, under the old law, by a petition only of 10% of the previous, um, election voters, you can, uh, elect to have that petition done, but under that old law, it clearly states unequivocally that you have to have a district, three-district, uh, option if you're, if you're a, a council of five, one at-large and one mayor. There's no other option under the old law. The amended law allows for another provision. It doesn't, it doesn't take away the old provision, it allows for another provision. But that provision is very clear as well. It states that by resolution of the council, not by the elected citizens, by resolution of the council, you can by your own vote without us decide to go to a city manager form of government. And if you do, you have the option of deciding whether it is at-large or by district. That is where the confusion in all of this is. The confusion is this: the Fairhope, uh, Fresh Start movement has created a petition that uses the old law by stating that we will do it by the voters, and it's combined the old law with the new law that says, well, um, we're gonna, we're not gonna address the district thing, we want it decided, uh, or it's left undecided, it'll be decided by the council. It's combining the old law with the new law. That is where the confusion is. It's simple, if you study this and read this as I have, it's simple, well, it's not simple the confusion, it's simple where the confusion is. So, it does need either a court opinion or a ruling by the Attorney General as to whether or not the petition is valid. I want a change to the city manager form of government. I don't really care one way, the other, whether it's at-large or district, but there is enough confusion around it for reasonable people, including the mayor, who's been made out to be the bad guy on this, and now you all are being made to be out the bad guys. None of the people here, the elected officials, in my view, are the bad guys. The mayor wants a city manager form of government. Obviously, she wants, she stated that she prefers a district form of government. I think it's really up to the voters to decide that. Uh, and that's really all I have to say, and I, I think that for you that are really interested in learning the facts, study this as I have for weeks, and I promise you I have, and learn what the confusion is before you form an opinion that these folks are biased against it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Hello, my name is Jim Morgan. I live at 18459 Pointe Court. Jay, I think I talked to you today, and.
Yes, sir.
Uh, I think I exchanged emails with a couple of you today. My quick, just two quick questions is, what prompted this, this, uh, the Attorney General's office to make this decision now?
We, we, we asked him for it, uh, was it in mid-August, I think, early August?
I think it was August the 13th when the resolution was passed, and we had a, it was a long delay between council meetings because the second Monday was practically halfway through August, but we started that process. You know, I know that I have an email asking for specific language of the attorneys in July, on July the 25th, so I, I, I only can assume that that wasn't my first conversation. If we were already talking about having language written, we had had a discussion that we wanted an opinion. So.
Right.
Somewhere in mid-July, or two, roughly two, two and a half weeks after the petition was validated, we started down this road of trying to get questions answered.
Was your, uh, question, was your question to the Attorney General, if we can do this, or, uh, what?
No, we never questioned whether, we didn't question the petition, whether it was valid. We didn't question whether or not we could do this. This, the question is simply, what does the, what does the new form of government look like if it passes?
And who makes the decision?
And who gets to decide what, whether it's districts or at-large? Is it the citizens that get to decide, or is it the council that must decide? That, those were the basic questions we wanted to know. Did I get that right, Councilman Robinson?
Mm-hmm, that's right.
And the Attorney General's office has responded that we can do this, but it has to be a district form?
Mm-hmm. Yes, sir.
And this just came about, yes, I just saw it for the first time late this morning.
All right, thank you very much.
Yes. It really wouldn't have stopped this meeting, I'm not gonna say if we'd received it later or earlier. This, this meeting was called to try to get answers prior to, uh, an, an election, and just ask them before people voted one way, thinking a certain thing, and voting, they may have been voting against what they truly wanted in the end. Uh, let's say, for instance, you, you vote for, uh, you vote either thinking the council's gonna decide, or voting thinking that you want them at-large, and it turns out that they tell us, well, they have to be districts, well, you just voted against what you, what you wanted, if you voted for a change. We're only asking for clarifications. Yes, sir, Mr. Zunk?
Thank you. My name's Chuck Zunk. I live at 59 Wyatt Avenue, and among other things, I am the spokesperson for Fresh Start Fairhope. Um, I have two minutes of prepared remarks, but I'd like to hold that off and just touch a little bit on some of the remarks that I've heard made here earlier today by you, in no particular order. Um, on the issue of asking the Attorney General for an opinion, uh, there's been a lot of talk about how you started to work on this months ago, that was the phrase that Jay used. But the actual fact is, as you pointed out, you never really asked for his opinion until August the 13th, I believe it was, when the council meeting was held. And so, no matter how long you dithered with it, the Attorney General never got into the act until the 13th of August. And on an issue like this, if it's important enough to have a special meeting two weeks before the election to try and stop it, why didn't you have a special meeting eight weeks ago, 10 weeks ago, 12 weeks ago, to prepare your question for the Attorney General so that he could have answered it on a much more timely basis? And we still could have proceeded with the election on schedule. That's one comment. Another comment I'd like to make is, two of you quoted the Fresh Start Fairhope webpage or Facebook page, and I certainly concede that that information is there, because I wrote most of it. But the thing you're ignoring is that a lot of those comments are pretty dated, and if you would've stayed up-to-date and looked at the more current comments, uh, we were the first to admit, like you, there was a certain amount of confusion. And as things have gone along, we've tried our best to go ahead and share information that we knew or speculated about, distinguishing between the two with everybody, and I think we've done a pretty good job of keeping everybody up-to-date. You've chosen to cherry-pick certain things that are outdated, that's your privilege, but I think you're ignoring the real point. Another comment I'd like to make is that, again, Mr. Robinson, uh, in his remarks earlier, mentioned, uh, that you've already decided to go to court. And, uh, I have to ask you, why are you even having the meeting if you've already decided to hire your legal people, and if you've already decided to go to court? I thought that's the kind of thing that should be discussed in an open meeting, but it sounds like you've already reached all those decisions, so why are we here? And then, I guess the other comment I'd like to make is, again, Mr. Robinson said, well, we really ought to do what the AG says can be done. Well, if the AG says, whether anybody agrees with it or not, if the AG says, if you have the election, then it will be district. So, my question to you is, why aren't you going to do what the AG says, which is go ahead and publicize the fact that if you vote for the referendum, then if it passes, it will be district representation and have the election on October the 2nd, instead of going to court to try to delay the election? Which is not what the Attorney General said. It seems to me pretty clear.
Sure.
And now, I'd like to mention, in my comments, I have two points I'd like to make, and they really kinda reiterate some of the things I've already said. You've known for four months from me directly that Fresh Start Fairhope intended to circulate a petition calling for the election now scheduled on October the 2nd, and more particularly, you've known the exact ballot language and the date of the election for over 10 weeks. And yet, you waited now until less than two weeks before the election to, according to your own agenda, seek appropriate legal advice in anticipation of what we all assume is your attempt to go to circuit court and try to stop the election? And deprive the 800 people who signed that petition of their right to vote. And I might mention, Mr. Brown, that yes, you're correct, there was one petition with over 800 signatures and one petition with slightly over 200, but the fact is, if you add 'em together, there are 1,000 people who said, we wanna change our form of government to a council manager form of government. And I think you're totally disrespecting those people who have the right to have an election on October the 2nd. They have worked hard, they've gone out and done what the law said to do, which is to get a petition and expect to have an election no longer than 90 days after that petition's been validated. We've followed the law, we wanna know why you're trying to get around it. Secondly, in the published agenda for this meeting, you imply very strongly, because you use the words, that there is a lack of transparency and public information. You may wanna look at your own actions or inactions in this regard. I can certainly appreciate the fact you wanna stay nonpartisan as far as your own personal opinions, your opinions are concerned. However, Fresh Start Fairhope, to the extent of its own limited resources, has posted emails, has a website that apparently you've only gone to recently, a Facebook page, and soon, a mailer going out to all registered voters, apprising them of all pertinent information as soon as we receive it, and we have kept all of that up-to-date. The council, on the other hand, uh, has not lifted a finger to host nonpartisan forums or informational meetings wherein all interested parties, for it, against it, for districts, for at-large, all interested parties and all voters, would be able to give and receive information about what is arguably the most important issue to be decided during your four-year tenure. Other cities go out of their way to create opportunities for their electorates to become informed, but you've chosen to stand mute. You've chosen not to organize any kind of sessions where people could come and learn and hear from all sides of the issue. Please don't use your inaction, your failure to do anything until August the 13th, to excuse, as an excuse, to claim that there is a lack of transparency and information to have an election on October the 2nd. Thank you.
Does anybody wanna address that?
Yeah, yeah, Jay, I, I think since Mr. Zunk addressed some of the things I said, I think I'd like to go first. Um, and, and I wanna start by saying, you know, Chuck, you know that I, I have the utmost respect for you, and I, I truly think you are a, a, a great person, and I think you know why. Um, but, to, to kind of start where you left off is, you know, I don't believe that it was a lack of transparency on Fresh Start Fairhope. I, I think you guys gave out the information you had based on your interpretation of what the Act says and what the law was. Uh, I, I think the issue here is that there was a misinterpretation, and I don't think it was intentional. I, I think we were all a little surprised to hear what this preliminary opinion said. It definitely did not jive with what I thought the result was gonna be. But, but I don't make the law, I just, I follow it. Um, and, and so, that follows up on another thing you said about whether or not we should do what the AG says. Uh, and, and if that means go to, go to the election on the 2nd, then we will, but that wasn't part of what the preliminary opinion included. And, and the reason I think, the biggest reason I think that going on October 2nd would be a, a mistake is because there are already ballots that have been cast by absentee vote that think they are voting for this, and, and it may be one person that thinks they're voting for this and that it's gotta be at-large, but if there's one person that's robbed of their vote because they didn't understand what they were voting on, because we didn't understand what they were voting on, then I think that's a mistake, and I think it needs to be corrected, and this is our opportunity to do that.
No, your opportunity was several weeks ago.
Well, and, and I'm gonna talk about that. Um, you know, you, you made the comment at, at the end of your statement that this is one of the most important issues that we'll have during our four-year term, and if that is truly the case, and I, and I don't disagree with you, what's the rush? It doesn't take effect for two more years. What, what is, what is a 30-day, 45-day, 60-day delay in the vote if it means that everybody has the right information? Now, for those that, that are in favor of the change, I get wanting to go on October 2nd, because it may be that you think that is the best chance to get it passed. That, that's not part of my decision, and it shouldn't be. Uh, I need to make sure not just the 800 that signed the petition, but the 7,000 registered voters or 7,000 people that voted in the last election have all the information they need, and that it's done correctly for all of you, not just the people that favor one side or the other. And so, that is, that is my basis for coming to the decision I've made. And Chuck, when, when I spoke earlier, I didn't say that we, as a council, had made the decision. What I said was, in my opinion, the best course of action in moving forward would be to seek an injunction with the court, to get some clarification on how to exactly move this forward. And, and the reason is, is because even if we get a final opinion from the AG, it's only advisory. It, it's not binding on anybody. The only person that can bind us in any way moving forward is the courts. And that is why it's important to go and get this and get this clarification, so that we all know that we're all on the same page when we go to vote. And I, and I don't know any simpler way to say that. Um, you know, I, again, I, you know, I, I'm disappointed in some of the, the things that have been said, because I truly have a lot of respect for a lot of the people that are talking, um, but, but I don't believe it, because I know that it's not true. Um, and, and again, you know, I, and, and I've, I've, I've been critical of people in the past for using the word council as, we're all the same person. So, I don't know when you say council, Chuck, if you mean everybody, or if you mean three of us, or two of us, or one of us, but I can, I can speak for myself and say that the things that you said about the council, as far as I'm concerned, are not true. Um, and I can only speak for myself. Um, you know, and that's just my, that's my position on it, and, uh, you know, I, I told somebody this earlier on the phone, may have been you, Mr. Morgan, that if everybody leaves here unhappy, that means I probably did the right thing. Um, and, and that looks like where we're headed.
I wanna, I wanna add on here, Jay, there's, there's a few things, uh, that I wanna clarify. We're not voting to stop the election. If we vote on this tonight, we're voting to stay the election. We simply want the facts. We didn't try to hold public debates because we didn't even, we didn't want, we wanted to stay out of the process of the petition, and, and if the petition didn't gain the necessary signatures, then why have debates over something that's not even gonna occur? Right now, why would we even have debates over this if people don't have the right information? I think you'd want the proper information to hold the public forums and hold the debates, which is another reason why we're asking them to stay the election, to give us the facts. At that point in time, it would be appropriate to have public forums and debates, but not, you don't go debate when you don't have the facts. You don't go to court when you don't have the evidence or the facts, the statements, do you, Jay?
You should not, if you don't have.
You shouldn't, okay. That's it. Yes, sir.
Jerry Bergman, I live in Fairhope, Hemerton Loop. Councilman Jay Robinson stole all my thunder. I don't have an axe to grind either way, but I think it's very important. I'm president of our association. I've had many, many people come to me and say, what is going on in Fairhope? We're gonna have a new government. Does that mean we're gonna fire all the councilmen and have another election? What does that mean? The problem I see, when we put it in a nutshell, is the people don't know. Mr. Zunk, his 800 and some people do know, because he's done a great job informing them. But there's a whole bunch of other people out there that have no earthly idea what this is all about. And I think, and I hate to say it, because I don't wanna upset people, but I think if we don't delay this on October 2nd, you're gonna be shortchanging a lot of Fairhope residents. Because number one, they're not gonna vote, because they don't, they say, I don't know what I'm voting for, so I'm not gonna vote. I sincerely feel that we need time to get the people informed. Mr. Zunk is doing, in his organization, doing a great job of informing the people. But we got, what, how many more? Hundred, 10,000, 15,000 other people to get informed as to what's going on, what they're voting for. Couple points of information: out of 460, excuse me, incorporated cities in Alabama, 16 have a mayor-manager form of government. Of those 16, Mountain Brook, Vestavia Hills, they have that type of government. Their taxes are very high. Check it, go on the web. Their budgets are just about six to seven times more than Fairhope. That's just the point. The other point of the matter is, there are 15 cities in. The other point of the matter is, there are 15 cities in Alabama that support the city administrator in their government. So what I'm saying is that if the mayor needs help in doing, giving her the benefit of doubt, doing what she needs to do, the council can hire an administrator right now. We don't have to change the whole government to accomplish this. Fairhope has had this type of government for a long, long time. It's worked very well. And I can speak to both sides because I was in city government, quarter million people, and we had this type of government. It works very well for large cities with large budgets and a large population. But Fairhope has not reached that yet, that plateau. That's why Montgomery, the mines up there, set it for the amount of population that when you can change governments. And that should be very well taken. I don't think they did it on a whim. I think it's very important to consider. If people want a big-city government, then they either need to wait or move to a big city. Fairhope is not a big-city government, should not be, should not be governed like it, because I don't know how many, I'm sure everybody here has studied it, but when you get a city manager, you put another political layer in there. And anybody that says that by getting a city manager will take the politics out of Fairhope government is dreaming. Every city, every municipality, every government, DC, is based on politics. Fairhope is a beautiful, wonderful city. We do not need to get involved in that junk. We do not need to start another political process. We have very capable department managers in Fairhope who run their departments according to their budget, and they're overseen supposedly by the mayor. If you put a city manager in there, and believe me, I've worked on them and was close to being one, but the council approves his budget as submitted or makes some changes if they want to. Once the council approves that budget and gives it to him, it's his money. Just take it as fact. He may spend it by line item, but he can also change. He can say, "We need a fire truck rather than paving this road." That's the urgency of it. Couple other points I'd like to quickly make. I don't know how much time I can.
Well, I don't, I'm not timing everyone. I've been very liberal. We do need to wrap it up some.
Okay, good. When this would go into effect, this new form of government, the mayor will preside over the council meetings. The mayor will set the agenda. I see it as a problem. We did not have all this going back and forth, these problems, until two years ago. Before that, the city was run very smoothly. The then-mayor, working with city council, did I do that when people were speaking? Was run smoothly. Before that, there was a lot of, a lot of problems. In the city, the people of Fairhope voted them all out wholesale, every council member, but kept the mayor at that time. So my last thought would be, don't take the citizens of Fairhope for granted. They know what's going on, and they will vote accordingly. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Yes, sir.
My name is Lieutenant MacWilliams. My wife and I moved to Fairhope three years ago. Our address is 154 Gaston Avenue. I'll be real brief. Before moving here, I lived in both Mountain Brook and Vestavia. The reason the taxes were high there is because the citizens wanted to pay money to have a first-class school system and have wonderful public services and to have city manager. Count, now, that's just to address a comment. My main point is this. If you have an ambiguous response from the Attorney General's office, and I'm fully aware of how Alabama politics works, I've spent 25 years working in and out of the legislature, why don't you pick up the telephone and get the ambiguity removed by telling the Attorney General? Or, and if you don't have the, I imagine someone on the council has the ability to do that, but if you don't, Montgomery can be kind of a cloudy, murky place. If you don't have that, get the President of Alpha, or the CEO of Alabama Power, or Nick Saban, or someone, to get this sucker on the telephone and say, "We need an answer within 48 hours because the people of Fairhope have an urgent need for clarity." And don't wait to get it whenever it comes in. Just get the answer, and now. You sent us something ambiguous. The population has a right to get disambiguity and clarification now, not a week from now. So government, work. I know asking stuff in Montgomery can take forever, but the right people that have the right leverage get answers every day without having to wait. Just get the answer, and let's get the problem solved with an answer, and not wait. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I would like to comment on that just briefly. The preliminary opinion that we've received does not have any ambiguity. It's pretty clear on how we have to move forward as far as what this vote will be. I think what's unclear as to, is how do we do that now based on the information that's currently been presented and the ballots have been cast already based on that information that was, now we know was inaccurate? I think that's the issue, just to answer your question. And also, if somebody can get Nick Saban on the phone, I'd like to talk to him.
Here, Jay. I'll share his contact info with you.
Good evening, Senate Council. My name is Gary Gover. I live at 300 Lincoln Street. I just want to offer a thought that I suggest that as you go forward with this, you do not reach a point where the result of your actions is that the referendum does not occur. I think that the progress made to date to get this referendum scheduled before us is entirely valid, and I believe that we do need to reach that point, that one of the consequences of this is not that that referendum does not happen. Thank you.
And Mr. Gover, I want to address that, if I may. We don't have the authority to kill this petition. We can't. So there is no action the council could take, or no decision we could make whereby the council itself decides that this petition can't move forward. All we can do is ask the court to clarify. If the court decides what the court decides and what implications and results occur from that, that's not for us to decide.
One of the consequences of your actions could be that the Fresh Start Fairhope organization winds up completely exhausted, having exhausted its resources in this, in its work to make this happen. And if they wind up completely exhausted, and so delayed that they cannot go forward, then that would be really unfortunate.
And I would absolutely hate to see that happen.
My name is Jim Cothran. I live at 156 Edel Street. The resolution that you're discussing says that you will take any action necessary to conduct a valid and transparent election. The law that enabled this upcoming referendum, I think, said that the referendum had to be held either within 60 or 90 days of the date of the petition. If you seek and obtain an injunction that could push that referendum out beyond that 60- or 90-day limit, will that invalidate the referendum? That's a question that I have. Do you have an answer?
We don't know that. That would be something that, that would be an answer we would seek from the court. And the way injunctions work, for those of you that are not familiar, these are sort of emergency petitions that require immediate action and an immediate hearing from the court. So the hope would be that we would have an answer in some resolution whether or not we can stay it at all, or if we can stay it, how long it can be stayed, what the ultimate conclusion is. And that's all something that the court would have to decide. That is.
Is this something that you have considered yourselves?
Absolutely. And my, what I envision happening here is that we get some stay, some delay in this, and that it comes up, it goes on the ballot in 30 days or in 60 days from when we get an answer from the court, so that the exact things that Mr. Zunk has said need to happen can happen.
The question though is, does that, does that push it beyond the 90-day limit, which would automatically invalidate the thing to begin with?
Well, not if.
And then we have to start all over.
Well.
That's my only question.
Not if the court gives you permission to do so. That would be, it would have to be by permission of the court. We, as a council, can't stay it. It would have to be by agreement and by order of the court for that to happen. Yes, sir.
Hello, I'm Marcella Franzen. I'm on 505 Myrtle Avenue, live in Fairhope. I just want to say that I appreciate that we do due diligence. Whether I'm for or against the petition doesn't matter, but I think this is important enough to take our time. I think it was well said that nobody is going to change anything immediate, so therefore I think we can afford to take the time to get the right information out there, to actually allow people to vote on something that they know what they're voting for. Because I have had already heard from several people signed the petition that it made a difference for them, or that they just wanted to have a referendum. So saying that all 800 people just knew that they want to do this is not even a fair statement, I think. And I think with a big change like this impacting us, impacting us financially probably, it's good to do due diligence, and I appreciate that being done. And we're talking, like you said, about a stay, not about getting it away, and so it's better to do our work now than after an election and be in a mess then.
Thank you.
City on Sedgeville Avenue. I have a little sidebar that I want to discuss. I supported the concept of a mayor-manager, but I had a strong feeling about the need for districts. And I just wanted to explain that real quickly and then ask a question. As a, my wife and I have lived here seven years. We're not lifelong Fairhope residents. We're not 20, 30-year Fairhope residents, so we don't have the network to reach into the city for help when we have an issue. And we've had two issues since we've been here, and I approached the different departments and basically felt that I got pushed aside. And I went, had a conversation with the mayor at the time, a different administration, and felt that I was pushed aside. And I went to do a little research on who my councilman was, because I figured, here's a vested interest, somebody who's going to help me because I'm in their district, and I was told there is no, they're at-large. So I felt very frustrated. And so when this first came out, there was some ambiguity, some confusion, excuse me. And it was that they weren't sure if it was going to be districts. They thought it would, the mayor said she thought it was going to be, and the Fresh Start was, we were not 100% sure. But I was always rooting for the district. So now that this has come up, I understand what you're saying. I think y'all, I think you're doing the right thing. I just want to know, if Fresh Start, from what I've read in the rooms when I've attended the meetings and the emails, most of the people just want the change, is the way I've been reading the sense, and that's my perception. If the Fresh Start representative endorsed the district component, would that help this process any and make it move forward? I realize your issue about the votes, the absentee ballots, that's a valid issue, and I respect that. But would it help in any way if Fresh Start was to shift their opinion to what we think is going to be required by code?
It would have helped if it would have occurred three or four months ago.
Okay.
I think, you know, and again, I don't, I don't have any issue with the fact that this is all happening so close to the election. I wish it wasn't. I wish we had this answer three months ago. I wish things weren't written the way they were written. But that isn't the case. And we can only play the cards we're dealt, and this is where we are today. But I'll, I'll comment on your district comment about not having a specific councilman to call. And this is, and this goes back to something somebody told me today on the phone, and this is, this is where like minds can disagree without personally attacking each other. The comment to me was, when you don't have districts and you have at-large, you don't represent anybody. And I laughed, and I said, you know, I see it the complete opposite. You know, the way I do this job is I represent everybody. Not one group, not one street, not one area, but the entire city of Fairhope. And I would think that anybody who has, I would hope, let me say that, I would hope that anybody that has an issue anywhere in town could give me a call and ask me a question, and I'd be happy to answer it.
And I appreciate your comment, but as a new person, you don't have that sensation when you strike out twice and you think the people that would be willing to help you. So you're going to go to a group that has no vested interest in you? So my perception, I understand where you're coming from, but think of it as a person who doesn't have the background that you have.
Absolutely.
And I felt like my perception was, you know, I'm not going to get anything that way either.
Let me use this as an opportunity to offer my help to you in anything that you need going forward.
Thank you.
Absolutely.
Also want to touch on that. You know, he's asking if Fresh Start changed their, you know, their approach to the district versus the at-large. You know, if there wasn't an issue in the beginning, why did they, why was there two separate, why was there one presented at-large and one presented district? And when I spoke to Mr. Zunk today, he said, "We did a poll within the 800-plus signatures that we got, and it was about a 60% were at-large supporters, and 40% were district." You know, where would they have signed the petition? You know, would they have signed the petition, or would they have signed the mayor's?
Not to get specific, but 63.
Good afternoon. My name is Chris Knight. I live at 50 North Bayview Street. I have a question I'd like to direct to Mr. Robinson. I believe you said that the preliminary opinion you got from the AG was non-binding. And you also said that the, or implied that the final decision would also be non-binding, that only the court could decide.
That is correct, yes, sir.
So, two questions based on that. How is it any different after you get the final opinion than it is as we stand right now, since it's still non-binding? And if the AG rules that the, or in his final opinion says it has to be district, then how do you deal with the petition that has been certified and has been authorized to be voted on?
Yes, sir, thank you. I'll be happy to answer your question. The AG's opinions are always advisory opinions, whether in this case or in any instance, but they are given weight by the court. So it would be, it would be another persuasive authority for the court to consider in deciding exactly how to rule on any issue that comes before them. So that's the, I guess, the first answer. And the second is, the Fresh Start petition that we're talking about does not say in the question itself, or in the petition itself, at-large or districts. It just says about a support in the change of government. And so there's no problem with the question the way it's been presented. The only, the only issue that we've had is what the question actually meant. And we were all under the impression, moving, or at least, I say all, most, under the impression that it meant that it was going to be at-large or a decision that the council would make after the election. And it turns out, based on this AG opinion, that is not correct. So the question is fine, it's just the implications of the question. So, the question is fine, it's just the implications of the question are, have now changed.
Well, the question then is, does that invalidate the petition?
I would not think so, but I, I don't know that.
Have you asked that?
Yeah, we've been told by multiple sources, probate court, that-
No, I mean to the AG, whose opinion you're waiting for.
Whether the petition is valid, I think that would be such a fact-specific event, that would be something the court would have to decide. Because it, it's not something that will, that will adjudicate all issues on this issue going forward. The AG will give opinions on, on broader issues that are, you know, if we vote for a change of election, who decides council? Who decides districts or at-large? You know, in this case, this would be a more fact, fact-intensive resolution, because it would, it would depend on how it was presented originally, who voted on it, and when they signed it, what was their decision-making process, and then how it went moving forward. That would, so that would probably be something, in my opinion, and I'm not, I'm not the, the last resort here, but my opinion would be, that would be something the court would have to decide.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Just one point of clarification. I'm still a little confused. Would you have pursued this course of action that you're planning regardless of the AG's preliminary determination?
Well, the, the-
To me, if you're only doing this because it came out for district versus at-large?
Well, Lisa, when did we advertise this meeting?
I think Thursday or Friday.
Yeah, Thursday or Friday of last week is when the meeting was advertised, so we did not have the opinion yet.
But I don't understand if, had you already, you were already going to court regardless of the AG's determination?
Well, we didn't know we were going to get the AG's determination. You know, we, we, you can only ask the Attorney General a question. You have no idea when the result's going to come back.
So, if he didn't come back and say at-large, would, would we have this meeting tonight?
Yep. Yes, sir. I still believe-
If it was unofficial.
I still believe we would have.
Okay. Thank you.
Anybody else?
They're talking about petitions and all. Why wasn't everybody in Fairhope notified about these petitions? I didn't know anything about them. Is it just a handful of people that this Fresh Start won't? Is it like publics? You go carry a pineapple a certain way and you carry it, you get invited into this club? Is this what Fresh Start won't? Give you an item, you carry it a certain way, you're invited? If not, you don't mean anything? Is this what Fairhope's coming to? I like what we've got. The mayor, the council. I've been here 65 years. It's worked perfect. I could talk to Nick, I've talked to Ken, I could talk to the council. They were always there. Why are we wanting to go with something that you're going to just be booted out? You're not going to mean anything. It's sad for Fairhope. It is sad. I think we need to do Fresh Start out.
Can I get your name and address for the record, for the clerk? We know you, but we'll, we'll keep it consistent. Thank you.
I'm sorry.
It's all right.
And Mr. Morgan, I want to, I want to answer your question a little bit more in depth, now that I've had a second to sit here and think about it. I, I think we would have gone forward, or, or at least, I, my vote would have been to go forward, seeking court clarification, regardless of whether we got an AG's opinion back or not. I think it adds to the confusion, the opinion that we got, and I think it further intensifies the need to get that clarification from the court, but I don't think it would have changed the need to get clarification in, in the first place.
Bob Seener, 252 North Summit Street. You've mentioned the clarification, the request for clarification. Can you recite what you're going to ask the court to do, so everybody understands exactly the wording? Because I'm not clear on that, or if you're going to publish that somewhere?
That'll actually be something that's drafted by our attorneys. It will not, we, we are not deciding tonight what, what, how the question will be phrased. That is something for the lawyers to, to draft, and it will be part of, of, of what they do. It all becomes public record once it's filed, and so, everybody will be able to see what is filed and what it says.
Are you, are you going to communicate that on the web or on the media?
Sure. I don't know why we wouldn't.
Probably discuss it during a work session. You know, I think the, you know, I'm not an attorney, but the, the blaring question is, who and when is it decided? What form of manager, council, form of government? Is it during the election? Is it decided by council after? Or is it district because of the way the petition was formed? I mean, I don't think anybody in this room can answer the questions. If you just say you want to change the form of government, that's fine. Say we go to vote, and then the council decides, and people are going to be raising, you know what, because the councils decide, and they didn't want the council to decide, they wanted to decide. So, we're kind of damned if you do, damned if you don't situation. We just want to make sure we get it right, and give the voters all the information before they go vote.
Okay.
My name is Kristen Laraway, and I live at 20320 Marion Court on the east side of Fairhope. I do know some of you. I am glad this is not exactly what I expected when I came and knew I was going to come tonight, but I am actually happy that we are getting more clarification, because that has been my issue as a voter and a concerned citizen, is that I had no idea what I was really voting on. Not that the gentleman who has put this all together, and the 800 people who have signed it, didn't do their work, but it was very ambu- ambiguous. I, you didn't, you couldn't really tell. One group says there's districts, one group says there's not. And like Robert just said, are we deciding? Are the people deciding? And then, based on that, my vote at that point was no. I'm not voting for something if I don't know exactly what I'm voting for and what I'm getting. And I think that's important. So, I guess I'm really just standing up here to say thank you for having this, and for maybe, hopefully, staying this election, not canceling it, but staying it until we do know what we're voting on. Because if it's not clear to the voters, I think you're right, you're going to have a lot of people who are not really happy at all. I like the concept, but I want to know more. I want to know, I'm a, I'm a pro-district, and when it comes to the concept, because I don't feel represented, even though I know a lot of you personally, know you, know your kids, known you for years. But it still doesn't mean I feel like my district is represented. And a lot of the growth is that way, even though we talk about how fancy downtown is a lot, and, and what we need to do to fix that in the Bay, I kind of feel forgotten. So, I just appreciate what you guys are doing tonight, and I appreciate that you're taking the time to get us a clear wording on what we're voting on. So, thank you for what y'all are doing.
Thank you.
I want to touch base on something she said, something we hadn't even discussed yet. Say we do go to district, who draws the lines? What I've been told, council decides.
We don't know that.
We don't know that. And also, in the resolution, just so everybody's clear, it says, "Conduct legal research and take any legal action necessary to conduct a valid and transparent election." This is, we're taking this step to have a, an election, not to postpone, not to cancel it, or not to do any of the other stuff that's been insinuated. We're just getting a little more time to get clarity.
Is there anyone else? Okay, I'll close. Public participation. I'll read the resolution, council. Says, "Be it resolved by the governing body of the city of Fairhope, Alabama, that the city council authorizes the firm of Wilkins Bankster files and win to conduct legal research and take any legal action necessary to conduct a valid and transparent election related to the proposed elimination of Fairhope's mayor, council, form of government, and change to a council manager form of government." I will entertain a motion to pass this resolution? So moved.
Second.
Have a motion and a second discussion? I just want to, I want to say for the people here, I, I, I feel like many times during the conversation tonight, that I, I wanted to give an opinion, and I just don't think it's appropriate. I don't want to bias anybody in that how I feel this should go. I, I pulled up a couple of emails and text messages on my phone. I was going to read them, and I decided not to. But I, I do want to let all of you know that, you know, this council is here to serve you. I think they do a great job. It's not easy in a city of Fairhope. We, we have a lot of intelligent, opinionated people, and it makes, we, it keeps us on our toes, and we respect it, we respect the feedback that we get. So, thank you for being here. Any other comments? Okay, hearing none, all is in favor of the resolution?
Hold on, Jack. I just-
Yes, sir.
I would like to clarify.
Uh-oh, there we go.
The, the notice of the meeting was, was done Monday at 5:00, I, I believe. Just, I don't know who asked me that, but it still would have been before the opinion was received yesterday.
Okay. Now, let me, let me give clarification of that, too. The reason that I think it came out then was that there was a lot of debate over when we could actually have the meeting. We're here because we have court. We had something, a conflict Monday, we had a conflict Tuesday, we had some people that couldn't be here Thursday, couldn't be here Friday, we're missing one tonight. And I think, Lisa, if you and I didn't talk for several days, as to best day is the when to even have it, it was like the only possible time that, that we could have it, and, and I think it took that long to iron that out as well.
Right.
Okay. All right. Any more comments? Okay. Hearing none, all is in favor of the resolution, please say aye. Aye. Opposed, say nay. Okay, motion passes. I'm going to take a motion for adjournment?
So moved.
All right. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. All right, we're adjourned. Thank you.